The special meeting slash work session of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Since this is a work session, this is not being televised, but we are recording it and the recording will be placed on the website. Is that correct, Megan?
That is correct.
Okay. So we're going to try to talk loud. We don't have a microphone tonight. So please let us know if you can't hear us. So having called the meeting to order, would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Mason Minna, could you call the floor, please?
Yes. Commissioner Bardis.
Here.
Commissioner Kempner.
Here.
Commissioner Patterson.
Here.
Commissioner Stern.
Here.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Dolan.
Here.
Chair Kapalansky.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Next up is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
So motion to approve by Patterson, support by Kempner?
Yes. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion passes and we will move on to approval of the minutes from May 24th, 2002. Any changes or additions to the minutes? Or motions to approve?
Motion to approve, support.
So motion to approve by Kempner, support by Stern?
Yes. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved and that brings us to communications. I see one email provided for us this evening having to do with the Seven Points Provisioning Center, which is an item on the agenda. So I will reserve that item, that email when that item comes up. I did not see any other communications. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that brings us to citizen comment. This would be for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Anybody that has to comment on an item not on the agenda, we would ask you to please use the podium to keep your comments to three minutes or less and to state your name and address. A general reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in back and forth discussion as part of any part of citizen comment, but we will be noting your questions and taking them as part of our Planning Commission discussion. Is there anyone who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda this evening? Do we receive any additional emails or other communication for items not on the agenda?
No, we did not.
Okay. I will close citizen comment then and we will move on to these. Excuse me. First, official agenda item under Old Business. This is PSP 04-21, Lot 53 on Oxford Road, also known as the Ivy. Is the applicant here this evening for the Ivy? Okay. If you could please come forward and introduce yourself and then I'll have Ms. Mason Minna give us the staff report and then if you have anything to add. If you just want to introduce yourself and then I'll have the staff report and then if you have anything to add.
Okay. Brad Freeman, Assistant Project Manager. Really nothing to add.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Megan.
All right. Just checking to make sure that that was still working. So as you know, they were here before you last month and there was a number of items and they were listed in my staff report in terms of things that you requested the applicant to look at. Essentially, all of them are done, but really need your verification in terms of whether the landscaping is adequate and also if you choose to approve this site plan, to make findings, again, on the landscaping and also that the additional green space and additional landscaping that's been put in warrants the parking reduction that you had indicated to the applicant that you would award at the last meeting. But that needs to be part of that motion to approve.
Okay. Anything further to add, gentlemen?
I'll say.
Okay. Before we get into the Planning Commission discussion, are there any comments on this particular item from members of the public? This is the Ivy. Do you please approach the podium? Okay. So I'm going to close comment on the Ivy and we'll move on to Planning Commission discussion. Who would like to begin this evening?
I have a question, right? I think I read that there is no striping or anything where the pedestrian crossing is across the street, correct?
Can you repeat that?
Where the pedestrian crossing is. You guys were planning on not striping that or anything on the actual street, correct?
Within that aisle? No. We weren't planning on it. Would you guys prefer that? I know it's just a residential law, that's why.
Right, houses over there. I think because it's at a curve, I would feel better if it was very clear to the people driving an automobile, hey, this is where people might be walking.
Yeah, you guys know. Absolutely. We'll stripe it.
That's the only thing I really stood up to.
Yes, Mark.
The screening wall.
Yep.
To the left, to the west.
Yep.
I think that's been moved out a foot from three feet to four.
Yeah, so the wall remained where it's at on the property line. We gained about a foot and a half additional to provide more. Then we provided additional trees within that buffer.
Okay. And the gap between your wall and the neighbor's fence will be four feet?
Will be between the wall and the fence? No. They would be right next to each other for the portion that...
Okay.
I believe during construction, you guys are going to work with it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's right up next to the property line.
Okay. Well, just to cut the chase a little, I don't want, I don't want that area between your fence and his to become a collecting point for a lot of trash and debris. Have you thought about that and how can we prevent that from happening?
Between his fence and the wall is going to be right next, adjacent to each other or you guys should work with them.
Sounds that if you put a second fence up, it's your job to clean between the two fences.
Oh, so you'll have to remove the fence.
Yeah.
But if you can work with them and he's...
That's the plan. His fence is a chain link in disrepair, so we'll put a nice wall up.
Okay, so it might end up being just one barrier there.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just expressing my concern about...
Yeah, absolutely.
Hoping that it doesn't become a nice, you know...
Yeah.
...focus point for pleasant conditions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks.
So is that four feet from the base of the wall to back of the curb?
Yeah.
Okay. You got arbs, arborides planted through there? Other questions or comments?
Just a little...
Oh, go ahead, Mark. Sorry.
You've increased the vegetation that you had planned from last time. Could you just kind of summarize how much of an increase you made?
Yeah, so we...
Just for all of our...
So we ended up adding approximately 50 additional arborides along that backside to provide additional screening as well as various shrubs around the building. When we shrunk the parking space, we gained additional landscaping from mirroring the buildings. Now provided shrubs 360 degrees around. As well as that tree requested on the southwest corner.
Thank you for accommodating all of our various requests. It's great when we can work together to come up with something that meets ordinance requirements and I think also provides a nice plan for the community.
Absolutely. Megan, do you need my name for the record?
Yes, please.
Michael Gold with Stonefield Engineering &amp; Design.
Okay. I don't have any additional comments. If there's no other comments from any other members of the commission, I don't know if anyone is prepared to make a motion?
Just a question about, are we allowed to take action on the work session?
This is advertised as a special meeting, not as a work session, and yes, you're allowed to take action.
Okay.
Good question.
Special meeting. Fair enough.
All right, I can try to make a question. Okay. Move to approve PSP 04-21, otherwise known as the Ivy. Finding that the landscaping as presented meets our standards. And any additional conditions of approval as noted in the staff letter?
She's got the letters.
I'll give them.
And the parking.
Yeah.
Oh, and the parking. And we find that the parking modification is given because of the increased green space and screening.
Since the applicant agreed, would you also like to add into that list of conditions that there's pedestrian striping?
Yes. And that there's pedestrian striping.
And that's across the drive aisle on Oxford. Correct? Crossing to Oxford.
Crossing to Oxford, yes.
All right. You have a motion. The next appropriate step would be a second from another planning commissioner.
I'll second it.
So motion by Kempner, support by Stern?
Any changes to the motion? No? Ms. Mason Minna, could you call the floor, please?
Commissioner Bardis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kempner.
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stern.
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan.
Yes.
Chair Kapalansky.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait. Okay, moving on to the next item. That's our first item under New Business. This is PSP 12-22, 28557, where we're Seven Point Provisioning Center. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes.
So if you'd just like to introduce yourself and then I want to turn it over to Ms. Mason Minna because there's a lot on our plate to talk about tonight.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Gabe Rubin. I'm a partner of Seven Point Dispensing of Michigan LLC. Here with me tonight are two members of our team, Ryan Howard, our architect and owner of HF Architecture located in Royal Oak, and Scott Roberts, our attorney and owner of Scott Roberts Law Firm, also of Royal Oak. We also have Julie Quell from Fleece and Vanderbrink, our parking consultant. She is in the hall on another meeting, but she will be joining us here shortly. So...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Megan, if you can take some time to explain what we're considering here this evening, what we are and are not doing in terms of approvals and denials and all of that.
Yeah. Thank you. So this is what, Section 138, 681, in Berkeley's zoning ordinance allows a sketch plan review by the Planning Commission. And what that sketch plan is, and I'm going to read the definition of it, is an item may be submitted to the Planning Commission for informal discussion. No approval shall be granted. However, the applicant may wish to present and discuss a proposed project and any anticipated problems before applying for site plan approval. Because this sketch plan request was for a marijuana provisioning center and by city ordinance, anything dealing with a marijuana provisioning center that is on a public agenda has to be noticed. So everyone within 300 feet received a notice and it was also noticed in the paper. As part of that, the chair and Chair Kapalansky, I think that it's your intent to allow the public to speak as well. But the point of this is for the applicant to get feedback and then make decisions and then resubmit. But also want everyone to know that there's another process running with the marijuana licensing. So the applicant, in order to obtain their marijuana license, has to be through the site plan approval process as all the other provisioning centers who have applied or intend to apply, those need to be done, if they get an extension, 90 days from the end of July. So, and if you want to... So that's the process. Two marijuana provisioning centers have already gone through the site plan approval process and will be on the city council's agenda, I believe, on June 20th. And then you will hear another one at your upcoming meeting on June 28th. So, but basically, the whole intent of this is for the Planning Commission to give feedback to the applicant so that then if they so choose to go forward with their project, they can make any changes that they feel are necessary based on the comments that they heard. I want to raise a couple of things while I have the floor, though. This particular, this particular... This particular proposal has two conditional rezonings that have been applied for previously. So this in blue is the proposed marijuana provisioning and retailing center. This in yellow is the parking lots that's associated already with this property. These items in red on Wilshire Road and then on Franklin Road are proposed conditional rezonings. That conditional rezoning would need to come to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would then make a recommendation and the city council would approve it after two hearings. So then, again, that's another process on top of the process that I talked about before. Some folks may be familiar, and I know Commissioner Kempner is, with the conditional rezoning process because two years ago, May 2020, city, March 2020, the city and Planning Commission recommended and the city council approved a conditional rezoning for this parcel here. It's 1256. This is 1276 Franklin Road. This is 1256. And that conditional rezoning never went onto the books because as part of the conditions offered by the applicant of the rezoning, they said if they had not gotten their marijuana provisioning center license within a year, the rezoning lapsed, sunsetted, and then the underlying RM zoning stays. Because this was associated with conditional rezonings that had already been submitted, I've made the decision to give the planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman, the direction to draft a letter on how those two conditional rezonings meet the master plan, to give you some ideas about what you would be getting from professionals if you were actually going to rule on those conditional rezonings. The applicant has been told, per advice of the city attorney and the city planning consultant, that the conditions that they offered tied it to the site plan. And since they tied the conditions to the site plan to the rezoning, those two need to come concurrently. But you're looking at this in general and in concept, and I thought it was beneficial for you to have that. And essentially, what they said was that those two conditional rezonings, based on the master plan that was adopted last November, November of 2021, so that's a change from when that rezoning had been approved in 2020, is that it doesn't match the master plan. And so you would have to have, you would have to make findings and you would have to have reasons why you would not go by what the master plan says. And that would need to be part of that decision on the conditional rezonings. So if they're tied to that site. So I'm happy to answer any questions either now or along the way.
I have one. Sorry, I have one student.
Okay. So let's, before we get into Planning Commission discussion, we have a lot of people here that want to talk tonight and I want to know if the applicant has anything to add. So if anyone has any questions from the Planning Commission right now on process or how these pieces fit together, let's throw those out now. And then we'll get to everyone and to the applicant before we dig into the specifics of the site plan. So go ahead, Lisa. What is your question?
The two properties for the conditional rezoning, is that one request?
No.
Or are they two separate requests?
They submitted them as two separate requests. So you, and they did that specifically so one could be acted upon and maybe one not. Because they recognized that they're two separate parcels.
Joe?
Is the prior property, the 1256-58, that's reverted, it's no longer has a conditional rezoning to it, does, is that consistent with the master plan?
That...
If it were to go, if it were to have followed the process that it was on before?
Not necessarily. So what, the current master plan as it was adopted, so actually, there might be two master plans in play. The master plan that was in effect when that decision was made, I can't, I can't talk about. I don't know. I'd have to look back at it. This, based on the master plan that was adopted November 2021, this area is gateway like this and this. So if this had been associated with something here, that could be said that that would be fine, that would match the master plan. However, these parcels, neither of these parcels are master planned for a gateway corridor or for the corridor expansion, which, if you'll recollect, that was really talking about expanding parking lots or service areas for corridor uses. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
I think three questions. Since there are separate conditional rezoning requests for the two lots, one on Franklin and the one on Wilshire, we would have to make, we'd have to consider those separately and make separate findings with respect to each of those separate lots in order to make a proper recommendation to rezone them to the city council. Would that be procedurally...
That would be procedurally correct, but the point of tonight is to talk about it in concept and so you can talk about the parcels together or separate.
Yeah, well, that was my other question. There's three items, actually four, I guess, items on this agenda. I take it that the site plan review request is just there as a technical, kind of placeholder to enable us to talk about rezoning the lots because the city attorney said that the two have to be submitted, considered simultaneously? And it's not really expected that we act on that site plan request tonight.
Right. Because it's a sketch plan, it was assigned a site plan number.
It's incomplete and it has a site plan.
Yeah. No, you couldn't approve it.
Yeah.
And we would never bring this, a site plan with this lack of detail to you for site plan approval.
Well, okay. Lawyers always ask questions they don't have answers to already.
Right, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I want to give the applicant the opportunity to make any sort of presentation if they have anything to add. The gist of this whole discussion is we're talking about all of this in concept this evening. There will be no approvals or denials. There will be no recommendations for approval or for denial this evening. This is all a conceptual discussion at this point. Does the applicant have anything they want to present?
Oh, we do. We have a...
Okay. Please come forward. And then after that, we'll do audience comments.
So my name is Scott Roberts. I'm an attorney for Seven Point. We'll move on to the next slide. Just so everyone is clear, you know, we're here to decide whether we should add additional parking. Wilshire and/or Franklin are concerned is that through the high-traffic nature of this, that there's going to be spillover on the streets. We're trying to prevent that. We're prepared to spend a lot of money to prevent that. I want to make sure it's clear that we do not have to. We're doing this voluntarily. We're doing this because we want to take advantage of it. So with that said, Seven Point, you know, it's a partnership between two individuals. One is an experienced cannabis operator, as you can see here. The other is a local businessman and real estate developer. Okay. We're on the next slide. So, you know, we're here to, you know, really discuss two rezonings. One between, one for 1299 at Wilshire and one for 1276 Franklin. As was said, you know, we ask that you consider these separately. You know, if you think one is good property and one is bad property, you know, that's the type of feedback we are willing to take out. So, I mean, a little background, you know, Woodward was plotted 100 years ago when Oakland County was mostly farms. People were still using horse and buggies and this type of high-traffic retail use simply didn't exist. Today, you know, there are 80,000 cars a day on Woodward. It's one of the busiest thoroughfares in central Detroit, if not Michigan. And because of that, there's going to be a high-traffic component now. And that high-traffic component, in our mind, requires, if not necessitates, additional parking. You know, as part of this site plan, we are adding additional underground stormwater management, which should reduce flooding in the nearby area. So if you want to blunt that out as well. We'll move to the next slide. While this, these properties are not designated gateway corridor, I'm of the strong opinion that this, our plan aligns with the vision and intent of the master plan, you know, specifically the section on corridors. You know, as it says there, you know, response to the 2020 survey indicated strong desire for commercial entertainment and mixed uses, but also physically fixed rates, i.e. the low kind of this narrow corridor between Woodward and residential does prevent that from happening. And where appropriate, you know, we need to relax parking requirements with other parking options such as municipal apartment. Those are not available. We use parking lots, which in this case is not available. You know, there's another, other very relevant sections to the master plan, you know, and specifically when it says to change parking regulations, you know, relaxing parking requirements is appropriate where other parking options are not available. And this is a situation where the only other parking option is the street. And if that's what everyone wants us to do, is send our customers to the street, then I guess that's what we'll do. Though that is not why we're here. That's not what we want. I don't think that's what the surrounding neighborhood wants. So that's why we're here today. We'll go to the next slide. So, you know, I talked about the high-traffic nature of this. You know, this is what is required. 15 spaces are required. We have 20 spaces. So, you know, as far as zoning is concerned, we have enough space. However, if you go to the next slide, you know, we did a parking study and we had an engineer estimate how many parking spaces would actually be needed. And that parking engineering study showed 48 spaces would be needed and we only have 12. So what's going to happen with those extra people? Again, they're going to spill over on the street. The next slide. And this is actually not even as bad as it really is because if you look at it from the kind of peak parking, then we'd actually need 52 spots. So then that's another 32 cars that, again, would essentially spill over on the street. And I'll also point out, the next slide, the next few slides, that this is, you know, something that is not unusual for this area of Woodward. You know, on the western stretch between 12 and 11 mile, there are a number of occasions where parking kind of encroaches into the residential nature of those neighborhoods. So I'm just going to go through a couple of them on the next slide. So I'm just going to go through a couple of them, the next slide. This one, you know, is 100 feet, 200 feet from our, our use, and you should see it, it cuts in. Next one. This one is about 3,000 feet down, just north of 11 mile, again, it also, you know, cuts in substantially, two parcels there, as you can see, would be very similar to a Wiltshire parcel. The next one. Similarly, this one cuts in about one to two parcels on both sides. As you can see, like the, the west corner is a very high-traffic retail location, it's a grocery store, people build in and out there, and peak parking there is substantial, and as a result, you know, additional parking was created for that use. Last one, next slide, that's the Flagstar Building. As you can see, that's the one directly across the street from Wiltshire, from where the subject property is. You know, it is in line kind of on a north-south basis with what we are proposing. And then one additional example, which actually didn't make it into the slide deck, but if you look at the Ormont-North Point facility, which is also in this western kind of quarter between 11 and 12 mile, my estimation is it cuts in by about five to six residential parcels of parking. So what we're proposing isn't inconsistent with what's already there, and it does comply with the intent and the vision, I believe, of the master plan, specifically the section on the. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian here.
Good evening. Brian Howard with B.J. Architecture, based in Willow. I can, if you could flip to the next slide. The existing building, which has been vacant since '17, used to be the firehouse subs. Next slide, please. This is our intent for the exterior of the building, which would include the firehouse sub building as well as the state farm. We're looking at it as congruently one building, even though it's two separate tenants. This would be, and our main entrance would actually be on the corner. As this building kind of comes in at a strange angle, we have this ability to create a kind of a corner entrance, main entrance to the building. Our intent is to have people, you know, come down the sidewalk and enter from the corner, but exit the building on the backside. If you could flip it to the next one, I think that shows the exit right there, which is very near the pedestrian vehicle light to make sure they don't get hit by cars coming on the alley. Next slide, please. This happens to be the rear of the building or facing the parking lot. And we have incorporated many sustainability materials to this building. We have an eco-friendly stucco, we have bamboo wood we're adding to the building. We also have, you know, opaque glass. We want, we don't necessarily are looking at it as a retail store, we're looking at it more like, you know, it's, it's more internal, the building's more internal than it is external. Although we still want to create a beautiful appearance and aesthetic of this building. Next slide, please. I think these just happen to be the elevations of the building, of the renderings you just saw. I think you can flip through those pretty quick, if I can. That's the rear of the building. This happens to be a floor plan of the building, showing that entrance at the corner, showing where the parking lot is. This happens to show a little bit of the Wiltshire rezoning of that. But I really, what I want to point out in this particular slide is the striping that we're providing for pedestrians to go across the alley to the entrance on the north side, but there's also a curbside pickup on the south side, which also will have a striped area so that that person can pull in, do their pickup, and then leave readily. Next slide, please. These are just the interior renderings of the building, that I think there's five or six of those, so. That's the sales floor. So we really looked at the building as, as a true retail store when you walk into it, and really looked at it like it's a very high-end Nordstroms, that type of, that type of retail facility. This is a full site plan that shows both the, both conditional rezoning sites, the Wiltshire site to the west, and then the Franklin site to the south. The Franklin site would be one-way traffic, and it would also just be for employees, and we would actually sign that so that the employees just parked there, and that the customers would be parking on what would be the north and west parking lot, and then making their way to our main entrance. Next slide, please. This is a stormwater management plan, which basically shows our understorm, underground stormwater holding system, which would be completely under both parking lots. It would then allow for a trickle effect to occur into the infrastructure, the existing infrastructure in the alley, which then would extend, extend out to Wiltshire. And I believe it actually, I think it just goes to Wiltshire, I don't think it goes to Franklin, because it terminates, because that's where it turns from an asphalt alley to basically a dirt alley. And we have talked to ownership, and, you know, I don't want to certainly spend their money, but we, we have talked about and discussed about actually paving that whole alley, so it wouldn't be half asphalt, half, half gravel, which is the way it is now. So that stormwater management plan is, again, holding, holding all of our stormwater from our building and our parking lots, and letting it slowly get into the system. Also, we're doing two other things, we're doing a rain garden, landscape rain garden, and we're doing a bio swale. So we're picking up additional waters on the surface, and then letting them leak into dirt. I believe that's the last one, oh, I think there's one more slide. Scott, are you?
Yeah, I can talk on this. We, we did hold a community meeting, we did have three individuals in attendance, we sent a flyer, so everyone at Wiltshire and Franklin on that block.
I didn't get one.
Yeah, yeah, I could hear you, you speak up.
Oh, we had a community meeting, we sent out notices, at least some people, at least three people got them, I can say that. You know, three people did attend the meeting, I do see one person that was here today. Two people were generally supportive, one person who's also here did have some criticisms and critiques. We did, you know, we did listen, she did make a point about the noise in the parking. While the landscape buffer would, in my mind, mitigate some of that, if someone was to play loud music, that could be annoyance or a nuisance to neighbors, so, you know, we did try to address that by putting, proposing signs in the parking lot to ensure that there's no loud music, as well as instructing our security guard when they're roaming around, because it's going to be one woman security guard, to ensure that that does not happen. So with that, I think that's the end of the comments.
Okay.
Security guard.
So, I'm going to ask everyone not to speak out out of turn.
Armed security for armed robberies.
Okay. This is the time for public comment, but I'm going to ask everyone to please do so at the podium. We will record your comments and any questions that come up, and, and we, as the planning commission, will ask the applicant to address each of those questions during the course of our discussion. You can see that we don't have microphones tonight, so I'm asking you to please speak up, and, and no cheering, and no applauding, because that's just going to make it harder for us to hear, harder to collect comments, and harder ultimately to get you responses. So I'm going to ask everyone to come up and, and use your allotted time, and we will be writing your comments down and tackle them as part of the planning commission discussion. Please state your name and address as well, for the record.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
How much time does each person have to speak?
They have three minutes. And I will be paying attention to the clock in the back there, because we do have a lot of people here this evening. We do not, as a matter of usual policy, let people come back to the podium, so please try to get everything that you want to say in your, in your trip to the podium. Sir, if you would like to kick it off.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my name is Aaron Geiger, I'm an attorney, and one of my public comments is simply to address a question that Commissioner Baris had regarding the 1256 Franklin property. The reason I know about it is because I was intimately involved in that particular project. 1256 Franklin was actually part of a marijuana proposal, which included two lots on Woodward, being 28401 and 28453 Woodward, which are to the south of Seven Point's lots. And Aaron Schulto did agree with us that they were part of the Woodward corridor and part of the master plan, so the, the 1256 rezoning was a completely different subject matter than you will have before you when they present their plan. That was the point of my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. Who would like to go next?
Hi, my name is John McNally, I live at 1408 Wiltshire. And first of all, I'm only three houses away from this proposed provisioning center, two houses away from the parking lot that would be developed, and so I really should have been noticed, and I was not. I wasn't noticed, I wasn't notified by this gentleman back here, and I wasn't notified by the city, and I take issue with that. I also take issue with, this meeting seems to be kind of a secret meeting, it's not in the normal schedule, and so I almost didn't even know about this. And I've been, and my radar was on for it, and that's why I'm here. But with all that said, I will, I, I'd like to make my comments here. So my comments are, I've lived here in Berkeley for 30 years, 23 years at that address. I've raised my kids to be responsible kids in a pretty safe environment. They've all graduated from Berkeley High, and they're all doing very well in society. They're bringing me grandkids, so I'm really happy. I will oppose any aspect of this business that denies my ability to have a life that I've come to enjoy, and this is encroaching on my serenity. So tearing down houses and replacing with parking lots, it hardly enhances the quality of life in the neighborhood. Think about that for a minute. All of you live in a house, would you want a parking lot next to your house? Just think about that. And then this up here showed a parking lot bisecting two houses. So now you've got a parking lot on either side of a house. Does that really look good? And it blasts right through a hy, a fire hydrant, that's got to be moved, somebody's fire insurance is now affected. So. Signage, I would hope that signage for any one of these would be discreet, if that signage looked somewhat, it's kind of big letters, but at least it doesn't say marijuana. So. Lighting, direct, there's direct light and there's residual glare. I look through my bedroom window, actually, it looks at me, I see an Amoco sign from up on Woodward, red, white, and blue, and it's very bright, and it shines all night long, into my bedroom window. I wouldn't want any lights coming into my bedroom window, I wouldn't want to see that glow. It's just something to consider as a planning commission, if you would please. Smells, weed smells. You can smell it, you go to Pine Knob, you go to a concert, you can smell it, I know that's being burned, but you can also smell it when it's, when it's in a residual state. I would hope that you would at least consider making these businesses contain the smell, and there's ways they can do that. I'm an engineer, we can control welt fumes, you certainly can control marijuana plant fumes.
Mr. McNally, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Oh, okay, I'll get right to the back. There's armed robberies will spill into the neighborhood. There have been 85 armed robberies, armed, with guns, people have died. Please Google search all this, and that was in Washington State. There's been, just this year, from January to May of this year, there's been armed robberies in every state, including in Michigan, three of them, to medical marijuana facilities, a man had his ear cut off up in the thumb area, that's Google searchable, that is a real thing. And there was two deaths in Michigan from being shot at in Detroit from a medical marijuana provisioning, a, a, medical marijuana provisioning center. The safety is going to spill into my neighborhood, and, and it's not something that enhances my quality of life. I ask you to please think about all this, Google search, robberies, pop shops, robberies, marijuana provisioning centers, and you'll see an awful lot of them.
Thank you.
You, you didn't let me address half of my other points, but that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. McNally, and we will, I am writing all this down, so we will get to it as part of the discussion once we collect everything.
Yeah, so you've had months to talk, and I get three minutes, that, that's okay. Please Google search, though, please.
Who would like to go, go next?
Hi, Sam Graff. I am blessed to be living at 1256 Franklin, and it's by not only a parking lot, but also by drug dealers. So my husband and I have worked in cannabis industry for quite a while, we have a lot of friends who work in cannabis industry. Talking like there's a microphone here. Yes, okay, so we've lived in the cannabis, worked in the cannabis industry for years. And we have a long-term lease at this 1256 Franklin, we just got out about this, it's kind of a shit situation, but, I mean, if you, I know that this is all going to be moving forward regardless of whether or not, you know, the planes are already in place, they've already picked out the spot, it's going to happen, but if you cannot annex us from the rest of the neighborhood, I mean, he's absolutely right, everybody's place has been broken into multiple times, I mean, they've come through with cinder blocks, or like sledgehammers through with cinder blocks into the back of these houses, I mean, the robbery, you're just jacking that up. Not to mention, our alleyway is right there, which also our driveway is in that alleyway, we're going to be like totally jam-packed in there with people coming through, and they completely annex us, and in addition, use that area as like a drive-through, it's, it's going to be a nightmare. And the, the lights, the security, it's all just, I don't know, it's like lighting up here, it was, I didn't realize that we were annexed. I, I know that, I'm under the impression through hearsay that our landlord eventually does want to sell to this whole situation, but we're going to be there for a hot minute, like, if you're going to do this, can it be a phase two in five years? Is it, is there some kind of other option that still allows us? I mean, the, the amount of money that we pay to live, and the amount of money that our neighbor pays, it's a duplex at 1256, 1256 and 1258. The amount of money that we shell out to live in Berkeley in this rental is just going to be soul-crushing to live there and to be annexed by an additional parking lot. And I know that they're throwing money at this, I've talked to the neighbors, I know that they have paid four times the value of these properties, I mean, through hearsay, but, you know, money, throwing money at it doesn't, doesn't comfort anybody else's issues, and it doesn't comfort anybody else's quality of life when you're already paying, you know, double of what a mortgage would cost in this spot. You know, we moved here from out of state for new jobs in cannabis, not in this area, but, you know, we had to hustle it to get up here to get, we couldn't get a mortgage or whatever, at the, in the amount of time that we did move up here, and like, we're going to be screwed, and it's going to be awful, and we work in cannabis, and we know how intense these areas are, and we know what kind of people it brings, and what kind of trash is going to be thrown out and be going through our yard. We picked this neighborhood because it was safe and it was peaceful, and the neighbors are just, I have the most amazing neighbors I could have, and it's going to be a nightmare to completely seal us out and close us off. So if you could please consider that, I mean, if this was a, I'm very interested.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is William Sauer, I live at 1591 Wiltshire Road. I'm here both as a resident of Berkeley and resident on Wiltshire, and I'm also president of the Oakley Manor's Homeowners Association. I'm speaking as to the house that's located at the corner on Wiltshire. Obviously, it's a residential property, and it's in Oakley Manor subdivision. Oakley Manor subdivision has a number of deed restrictions. One of them is that properties cannot be, residential properties cannot be torn down and made into commercial parking lots. properties cannot be torn down and made into commercial parking lots. I don't know if the planning commission was aware of that, but the city has been aware of it in the past. Normally, when something like this is proposed, we get contacted. That did not happen this time around. Why, I don't know. Possibly, there's been a changing of the guard since it was necessary to contact us. But this is the first we had heard of it, thanks to John and Dave here. So I think that certainly needs to be taken into consideration. I don't think that this plan, as I am aware of it being talked about, can go through in violation of the deed restrictions. And if it's decided to, for whatever reasons, to go through, I can rest assured that the Oakland Manor Association is not afraid to take the city and/or the developers to Oakland County Circuit Court. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Good evening. I'm John Stevens, 1922 Edgewood. I am the treasurer on Oakland Manners Association. And just to further some of the points that Judge Sauer has indicated. Oakland Manners was planted back in 1921, and covers properties, residential homes, from Rosemont all the way down to Catalina. This particular property on Wiltshire is one of the residential lots within the subdivision. The association was formed to protect the enforcement of the deed restrictions. That's its primary purpose. And it has done so since about 1960. We have been in court half a dozen times, all the way up to the Michigan Supreme Court. And we have won each of those cases. And if, for whatever reason, the planning commission, the city were to be so unwise as to approve this flawed plan, we will be in Circuit Court very quickly for injunctive relief based on the residential site of residential restrictions impressed on this lot. So I would please ask that you take that into consideration in your planning thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Stone. I live at 1340 Wiltshire. And I don't know that anyone here can answer these questions, but I'm going to pose them anyway. We live directly, we live behind Flight Star Bank. And I guess my question is that the gentleman came up today and talked about that this would be a high-traffic business, right? That they have a certain number of required spots, which they clearly need today. But he comes saying it was a high-traffic business. They went through a whole parking assessment. And they bring to have concerns about spillover into the street. I do, too. It'll be a part of my house. So I guess my question is, why was this parking assessment not done prior to granting the ability for this business to come to the location it is today if we didn't feel that it had enough parking to accommodate the business? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Mullin. I live at 1615 Wiltshire. I'm worried about the traffic if this thing goes through. Wiltshire is a straight shot right through Berkeley. There's a light at Coolidge. And right now, the road's pretty crappy, but if it ever gets fixed, there'll be a lot more traffic on it. And if they're coming down there and turning into, off of Wiltshire into the building, you're going to have people coming down Woodward, turning in there. And then you have the cutoff coming off of Woodward, coming in there. And I've seen some crazy things happen down there coming off of Woodward. Now, they have a drive-through. How's this drive-through going to work? It's going to back up onto Woodward like Starbucks, which is a joke. And they come off of Woodward, coming down Wiltshire, and turning in there if they could turn, if you're allowed them to turn in off Wiltshire, which I would say if it goes through, that has to be stopped. They go turning in off of Wiltshire to keep people off the road, and no exiting back onto Wiltshire.
I believe they proposed a traffic flowing north.
So sir, we're not going to speak out from the audience.
No, I'm just saying, these are, that could be a real traffic problem there. I've come off of Woodward there. And the business has been small there before, so there's not a lot of traffic. They come off, you're turning right in there, so you're going to have people coming up looking where they're trying to go. I have a business in Ferndale. It's right by Liv. Liv goes between Hilton and the back street of it is Goodrich. So they're coming off Woodward Heights, coming down Goodrich into there, coming off Hilton onto Grayton, and they're feeding back into there. And 420, you couldn't even go get near the place. So I don't feel 420 here. But I'm learning these things, too. I go, what's the deal with the traffic? Well, it's 420. What's 420? I guess I, well, I don't know. But anyways, I'm very worried about the traffic pattern and the drive-through and getting people through it. Because I've seen what goes through Liv, and it can be, a lot of times, some places are fine, and sometimes it's really crazy. And people are always looking where I go, where I go, you know? How do I explain that? So that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Berida. I live at 1935 Wiltshire. My mother-in-law lives at 1344 Wiltshire. So she's five houses from it. I'm about two, two blocks from it. I can't, can't agree with this gentleman more. It's a terrible location for something with high traffic. What we didn't mention, though, is that Wiltshire is the emergency route for getting from the Berkeley Police Department out to Woodward via coming through the neighborhood. So when ambulances have to come in this direction, they come down Wiltshire. The road is in deplorable condition. It is really bad. Any more traffic, it's down to the base in many spots between Coolidge and Woodward. Hasn't been maintained ever, and it probably never will be supposedly. It's the second worst road on, in Berkeley, and supposedly, it'll get fixed next year. But I seriously doubt that's ever going to happen. But the real problem is, you're making a bottleneck at Woodward and Wiltshire by having any more egress in and out of that, that property, especially if you have the volume that they're expecting and need so many parking spots. It's a terrible location. So you're going to have police and fire trucks coming down that road. And where are they going to go with all this traffic coming in and out of there? It's going to slow them down. And I know that the, the fire department has a lot of say in what happens on a street like that. So I just think it's a terrible idea to have it there and to do any more parking there. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Joanna. I live at 1294 Franklin, right next to the proposed parking lot. I am a single woman. I am very concerned about the safety, about the noise, the lighting, the security, just like everyone else. Also, the noise of the building to build the parking lot to knock down the house. My house won back in the 80s, Berkeley's most beautiful couple of times. And I don't think a parking lot next to my home is beautiful. I am very concerned about just staying there, living there with that type of traffic coming through. I haven't heard anything that shares with me how it will be shaded or divided, or, you know, how tall walls will be, or anything like that. But the bottom line is this. I came to Berkeley because it's very serene. It's a beautiful place to be. My daughter was raised in the house, and as you mentioned before, I have grandchildren now. And she went to Berkeley High. I felt so safe with her walking to school, back and forth every day. I felt safe. I feel like it's a community that you can leave your door open. Living next to a parking lot of a facility like this, I don't think I would stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ian Whitelaw. I'm with Central Properties Group. I'm the owner of the property and business owner of the corner of Franklin and Woodward at 28401 Woodward. I'm also here, first of all, Bill, you can see him here. I'm here to represent Mr. Naxis. They also own the property next to us, the commercial duplex that is between us, the dry cleaner, state farm. I may have never seen them all along, sure. I want to bring up a couple of things, first, for the applicant to consider as they progress through this, secondly, for you guys to consider, because I was here before with another very good applicant, trying to present to you guys, we got the conditional rezoning on 1256. We had a great plan. We thought that was a great development of the area. What we're finding now, and again, we're excited to have new neighbors, because there needs to be something done with our commercial business. Harmony House, Dry Cleaner, us, there's been a lot of vacancy down that corridor, and we would love to see something happen. I'm not sure presenting into the other side of it is a great idea. I represent Mr. Naxis, the property owner, as I said, to the commercial duplex to the side of us. That property is currently for sale. Our issue is, we can't sell that because of the timing. We were up here three years ago with you folks, trying to come up with something through this marijuana that would redevelop that corner and that area. These folks luckily won for their, got the deal. We did not. We're not a part of that renovation. We just don't want to be left behind. I spent, with Mr. Naxis, $12,000 to redo the Woodward corridor, the ingress, the side road. It's owned by the county. That is not officially parking, although we use it for parking. So we're concerned with the parking moving forward. Franklin is the only overflow parking. Three spots there for us that's really usable. We're having a difficult time selling the building next to us, duplex that's for sale, because who's going to buy it? There's zero parking. It's a duplex. I can't very well go to a commercial property and find a good tenant for that property. We're looking for a couple of things. We want to move something along faster than slower. We'd love to hear you guys say yes or no to these folks so they can move on. We have not spoken to them. I was on a conference call, because they had a conversation with the duplex again. But we're at the corner. It's my building. I represent the guys to the north. They're for sale. I bought our building and have been tied up in this since we've owned the building. So we would love to see you guys move forward with something, anything. But please be careful. We have zero parking whatsoever. I can't sell the duplex because I can't park. These new tenants are fantastic and are taking care of the property firmly behind us. So that's encouraging, but we need more. So I love the outside of their building. It's better than a vacant sub shop. So I'll ask for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Glenn. I live at 1354 Franklin. And I think my husband sent an email, which is chock full of engineering language that he also shared with the crowd. He speaks quite a bit to the flooding concerns that we have on Franklin. Everyone else has touched on that, but I will say it is not an uncommon and frequent concern for us on Franklin, particularly, we were up half the night last night, worried about our basement flooding because of the thunderstorms. You mentioned, I think, the architect, that he thinks the water, the drains flow into Wiltshire. That is not untrue. There's a 12-inch main through that alley that goes into Franklin. And that water comes into Franklin from Wiltshire as well. So flooding is a big, big, big problem for us. That's number one. I don't think we need that many parking spots. It's almost effectively tripling the number of parking spots in the existing parking lot. If they're concerned about employee parking, they could come up with an agreement with perhaps the people who own the F Y, the lot behind the F Y E store, the former F Y E store is empty parking. Plenty of room for their employee parking. Or Shanbaum, the I Center to the north, I think, has a huge parking lot, which is vastly underused. So I would also be concerned about the traffic flow. Franklin is already a cut-through for people going on ways. So as the Wiltshire-Woodward intersection is a concern, so too is Franklin-Woodward outlet, because the turnaround is right there, and people just go across Woodward, right across from the Motel Motel. And so we already have a lot of extra traffic on Franklin. Property values, Joanna. We don't want to lose people like Joanna. She is a good neighbor. Her house is adorable. She plants flowers. It's just the cutest little thing in the world. Her values, our values, will all go down. No one wants to live next to a parking lot, not only for the aesthetics of it, but in real estate, when you comp property, if it's next to a parking lot, that is a ding on your property value, guaranteed. Close to or next to, you're going to hit our property values. And we really do not need that. Someone spoke to the pollution, noise, light, odor, those have to be avoided. No one wants to live in skunky pot land. We really don't. We don't want the noise. We don't want the lights. And I have posts for this on Next Door. My husband and I play a little game when we walk around. It's pot or skunk. And I can't tell the difference. And you're smelling it. So no one wants to spell skunk or pot. Pot can be avoided. Skunks, sometimes not so often. Loitering. What is going to be done to prevent any loitering? If, regardless of whether they expand the parking lot or not, I really firmly believe there should be a one-hour limit on the parking in that parking lot to encourage people to, to move it on. We do not need people out there partaking in one way, shape, or another, in the parking lot and loitering. And I think that is a nutshell. Oh, thanks, Mr. Naxis. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Veras. I live at 1336 Franklin Road. I'm Mary's next-door neighbor. A couple of things to add to all the other comments. Can't agree enough with everything that's already said. I run the length of Woodward all the time. As you can see, finally, some of my neighbors here, I'm the one running by all the time. But I run that corridor, and I would agree, and I compliment the attorney, by the way, you need your homework on parcels that are there. There is a lot of parcels there where homes have already been torn down and everything. The only I would add was, there's another one, Citizens Bank, where that was. It goes fairly deep, and that's also empty. My point is this. I run that corridor. There's at least six parcels. Citizens Bank, where F Y E was located, the Blarney Stone. You go up and down that corridor. You have to be at 11, between 11 and 12 mile. There is empty spots right now. That location is not the only location. Okay, number one. Number two, I do a lot of biking in Detroit. I pass by all of these dispensaries all the time. I have never seen anything, I'm talking east-side, west-side, Mexican town, you name it, north end of Detroit, even along Woodward, south of 8 Mile, there's a couple dispensaries. I have never seen a dispensary over the last six years, 10 years, that had the need for 50 cars. I'm concerned what kind of marijuana they're bringing in, that they need that kind of traffic. I mean, you mentioned the Nordstrom of dispensaries. I mean, we don't want a Costco there. We don't want a Nordstrom there. What kind, what kind of business is this? So I want that planning commission to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanne, and I'm at 1343 Wiltshire. So if they turn down those houses, I'll have a parking lot right next to my property. So I did attend the Seven Point meeting. And what Dan just mentioned is one of the things that I asked, why would there's other properties on Woodward, and probably all throughout Berkeley, where there's already parking lots, and you don't have to encroach into a neighborhood and tear down houses? You know, why do you want that? He explained, he had to have a property before he came to the city. So I understand that. Maybe they'd have to go through some cycles to pick up a different piece of property. But, you know, it would certainly make the neighborhood more happy, and they wouldn't have to be tearing down houses and building parking lots. So that was one of my concerns. And he brought up the issue of, if we don't build a parking lot, well, then parking's going to go all over the neighborhood. Well, from my point of view, that would be preferable, to have it spread out all over the neighborhood, although I don't want that. From where I live, I'd rather have it spread out through all the neighborhood than just stuck all right next to my house. And I had also brought up the concern with noise, because Flight Star Bank is on the corner, and it's not unusual for cars to pull into Flight Star Bank with the loud amplified music. We hear it throughout. We hear it throughout the whole day, and they're planning on being open seven days a week till 10 o'clock at night, and I'm thinking, how many more of that is it going to be? And they said, well, we didn't think about that. And they said, well, maybe we can have the security guard tell people to turn their music down. Well, I don't know how realistic that is. I don't think people will listen to signs that say, please turn down your radios, I don't see that. Is the security guard going to run all day long, turn down your radio, turn down your radios? So that was a concern for me, is having this parking lot next to my house with all these loud cars coming in and out. And again, there's other locations they could go, where there's already parking lots there. And with that being bumped right up against my property, I'm very concerned that it's going to impact, you know, the value of my home. And I've lived there since 98, and I've spent a lot of money fixing my home up, and was, you know, hoping to, within the next few years, I'm probably going to be downsizing, and was hoping to sell my house. It's a home in a nice family neighborhood, and I'm very concerned that it's going to negatively impact the value of my home. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Nancy McChesney, I live at 1491 Wilshire, my husband's here tonight. And I appreciated the comments tonight from Judge Sauer, as well as John McNally and his family, because if it weren't for these people here tonight, we too wouldn't have known about this meeting, as well as the one that was held beforehand, which is a real bummer, because we care about Berkeley a great deal. One of the things that concerns me, first off, is the potential runoff for flooding. The architect described in brief how that might look, resurfacing, repaving, I'm not sure, with the parking lot, the stormwater, the draining underneath. I can tell that there's some expertise on this board, and that I'm here to say, please pay attention to that, please Google it as it was suggested, and put your heart and soul into everything that these people have said tonight in opposition to this, because we do live here. We've put money into our homes, none of us want to live next to a parking lot. Behind Flightstar, whoever that homeowner is, I feel sorry for them. Their homeownership, their depreciation is right there, front and center. The ones right 1256, the ones next door to that, if you rezone those two, as they're suggesting and asking for tonight, it affects more than just money, it affects safety. Guards? Guards? Are we going to have guards? Did they talk about that? Will they be sitting outside on a chair? Will the guard be inside with a weapon? Like what is the incident rate for these kinds of businesses? There's so much to consider tonight, and your jobs are huge. You too are representing us. The spillover? I didn't know it was till 10 o'clock at night, that makes me ill. Lighting? Amaco from across Woodward, I think that is? Lighting in a business like this, soft lighting, different types of lighting? Jeez. Sound, safety, smells, lighting, what kind of walls, what kind of landscaping? I mean, you have Arboi's all around that too, you know, as we were talking about, like it's not enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Diane Bergy, I live at 1307 Franklin. I've heard some of my neighbors, who I don't really know, but speak of the things that would be my concern. I didn't plan to talk tonight, so I don't have something planned, but I've lived in my house since 1974, which is 48 years. I didn't move there to live across the street from the parking lot. I moved there to live in a nice Berkeley area. My husband's lived in Berkeley since 1950. It's always been a really nice city to live in. And right across the street from me now, there may be a parking lot, and that's just, the flooding's a problem, we really, well, my house floods sometimes, not that much. And I'm shaking, because I don't talk like this, but I hope that the parking, they can't turn down Franklin, I don't know if you know, somebody said, that's a turnaround right there. We have, we're only one little block, so I think nobody pays attention to us. But there's definitely, it's not like Wilshire, but we definitely have traffic. And turning, if there's any left-hand turning, or right-hand turning, I'm sorry, off of this parking lot, this shit might go there. They're going to go down my street, and if there isn't, they're still going to, because even though there's a turnaround and we get traffic, quite often Woodward is so busy that I go the other way than going down to Woodward. Like, oh, if you tell them to go around, because you can't always turn that into, to get across, if you know what I mean. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Kevin Graff. I live with my wife at 1256 Franklin, unfortunate location that is. I ask that you please consider not annexing us, isolating us into that island to become our house. I've worked in the industry most of my life, I'm pro cannabis, but I am not pro dispensary being 100 feet from my house. I'm not pro, but it's going to do to our neighborhood. These are wonderful people, who were there long before we were, and long after, hopefully. It's truly unfortunate. Like, I understand for a city, what a business like that can provide. But I also understand how people in this industry with way too much money make gross decisions, and how it affects the people, the communities that they're involved in. I help run a 70,000 foot facility. And the last thing I want to do is come home from my day and deal with people in my alley, and I can't get in or out of my driveway. My neighbor is a single woman, our other neighbor is a single woman, my wife is home by herself, working remotely.
No jobs.
I don't, yeah, we don't need this type of risk. I don't need people getting high in the parking lot across me, or behind me. Trash, it's inevitable to spill out. As much as these signs and these people at these dispensaries will tell you, well, you can't stay here, no loitering, don't smoke, it happens. We're all educated in self-street smart, we know that this is happening. There's going to be issues. Armed robberies are definitely some of the worst of them. So I hope that you all consider the suggestions that we put forward. Thank you for your time. Vanessa.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We did receive the one email that was mentioned by Ms. Mary Glenn, which we received from her husband at 1350 Franklin, Mr. Tom Rolowitz. So that will be entered into the record too. There is quite a bit about drainage and airbrush, and I'm not going to read through it here, but we've all had the chance to read through it, and we thank Ms. Rolowitz for that email. Before we get into planning commission discussion, I tried to take notes on everyone's questions and comments, and I want to get through as many of these as we can before the commission talks about it. So I'm just going to start at the top and work my way down. Starting with the comments from Mr. McNally. First, I want to address this comment about this being a secret meeting. This is a little bit irregular, it is a special meeting of the planning commission, it was noticed as such, is that correct, Ms. Mason Minak? So it was noticed, it's not on our regular calendar, we usually reserve these Tuesday, first Tuesdays of the month, as work sessions to work on ordinances and things, we've had full agendas lately. So we are using this time to have a special meeting of the planning commission instead. And then as far as noticing, I tried to scan through the list of notices that were sent out as people came up to speak. A couple people that did say they did not receive notice, I didn't see her addressed on the list. So do you want to clarify, Megan, who notices were sent to, and what the process is for that?
Notices were sent to everyone within 300 feet, using Oakland Parcels Plus, and so it has the name and address that's on file as the property owner. You know, we did what we usually do, and it was in 300 feet, sometimes people are just a little beyond the bubble, though I do have addresses, and I will look into it, and will correct any labels. And then also what I can do is, if you said your name and your address, I can add you to the labels if this ever comes again, so that we can then add you to the notice list.
So if you are within 325 feet per the state of Michigan noticing requirements in the planning enabling legislation, you do not receive a notice, and that's common practice across the state of Michigan. So thank you, Ms. Mason Minak, for expanding that noticing list. If you would like your name added, please let Megan know, and if this comes back, you would be added to that list of labels. That was mentioned a couple of times, so I wanted to make sure we cleared that up. There were several items mentioned that are very specific to the site plan, so that would be concerns regarding signage, lighting, security was mentioned a lot of times, and I want to give the applicant the chance to talk about that a little bit. But we'll get into those very site-specific concerns as we talk about the plan a little bit later. There was several comments, or a couple of comments, on deed restrictions. So please, Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, the city does not enforce deed restrictions. That is the, that is a matter between property owners, so the city will not enforce deed restrictions. However, I don't want to speak for the entire city, but I would speak for myself, and I think a lot of the planning commission, when I would say, that we would not want to get in the middle of a dispute about deed restrictions. So I would hope that the applicant was well aware of the deed restrictions when they acquired this property, and I would encourage you to take that into account. Anything I said wrong there, Megan?
No.
Okay. The question regarding the parking spillover, and why that was not addressed before this was considered by the city council as one of the five licenses that were granted, I cannot answer that. I don't think that Megan can answer that either. I will have the applicant come up after this, not only to address the security concern we've heard about several times, but also to address the need for the additional parking. That's one of my questions as well, and I would assume that's one of the questions of the rest of the planning commission, how the parking numbers are calculated, and why this additional parking is needed, is something we'd be interested in hearing about. Traffic was mentioned several times as well. We may get a point to work with applicants to try to keep traffic patterns localized to their businesses as much as possible. I'm sure that you all realize these are public roads, and we can't say, we kind of cannot drive on the roads, but we certainly try to make sure that traffic impacts to neighborhoods are at a minimum. That'll be something that we discuss as we get into the site plan, and that would go for emergency access as well. All of our site plans are reviewed by our public safety department, who does review plans for emergency access and note any concerns that they may have. This was not reviewed yet by them, correct?
No, because this is a sketch plan.
Okay. Drainage and flooding was mentioned several times as a concern as well. That's something that is reviewed by our engineering consultant, and it's something that we would review again as part of the site plan, a specific we have not gotten into at this point. And we will get into if this should move forward. I think that I've had all of the things that are just general comments and questions that are not specific to this site. Is there anything that anyone else on the planning commission noted that I missed, before we get into site-specific concerns, and then the rezoning, and whether or not the planning commission would even consider being supportive of rezoning those parcels?
Yeah.
One of those things with our site plans that we require is that lights are shielded, that they go down and not have property. So as we get into the site plan, that's something we absolutely deal with. And I believe, I don't know if it's via the state or via our city, but one of those ordinances demands that there not be odors coming out from these buildings. Is it the state?
No, I think, there's a general, there's a general nuisance code, and I think there's something to deal with odor, so then if there was odor emanating, the code enforcement officer could take care of it. Also, to piggyback on what you said about lighting, any lighting on any type of use would have to meet the lighting regulations in the zoning ordinance, which do include that any light, lighted sign that's facing a residential area is off by 10:00 PM, and that we would look at photometrics for spillover. But, so those would be things that would be evaluated as part of a site plan review. Again, this is sketch plan, and those, that level of detail was not provided, nor has been reviewed.
One thing, the issue whether this is a drive-through facility or not, that's not allowed, keep me clear. Sorry, go ahead. No, that this, the question regarding it being a drive-through facility, does property, we don't permit drive-throughs, I don't think, off of here, so this is all parking related?
So I think that, good point, this would be the curbside pickup, not a drive-through. Drive-throughs have different standards in terms of stacking spaces and things like that. It really gets into the specifics of how the site circulation is set up. This is a very, I kind of want to take a step back here, because I think we're getting into a lot of the issues that we would get into as part of a site plan review. This is something that the applicant is kind of throwing at the planning commission and saying, what do you think about this? And we're saying our general comments back to them, particularly on this rezoning, because that's a big question. But we're not saying things like, we think your lighting is too tall here, because it hasn't been reviewed by staff yet. That's something that we would rely on initial reviews for. We have ordinances in place to regulate a lot of these things, but it's not something that we reviewed as part of the plan yet, and it's probably not something we're going to get into a really detailed discussion on tonight in terms of very specific items like that, because we just don't have the information that we need to comment on right now. What I want to try to focus this discussion on tonight is the potential conditional rezonings, because that's a big issue, and I do think that we can provide clear commentary and clear direction to the applicant and to the members of the public that are here tonight, who'll get a very good sense of whether or not the planning commission will be supportive of that. No decisions will be made, but I think you'll get a clear idea. We're probably not going to get a really clear idea on the site plan tonight, because we're just, we're here doing general comments, but I do think you'll get a clear idea on whether or not the planning commission feels like additional parking is warranted, at least based on the information that we have now. I think that's my goal for tonight, is to kind of get that out of the way, so the applicant gets clear direction on how to proceed with their development here. We want to be transparent as a community, and make sure that we're giving developers, you know, a clear sense of how the planning commission feels about particular items. And we also want to make sure that the members of the public are getting that same sort of direction. So with that, if the developer could come up then, there's a couple of general questions that I'd like you to address before we get into specifics. And first and foremost, first and foremost, I think that is the parking, why you feel additional parking is needed. I know you had that chart that you displayed with the other provisioning centers and their parking outline. It was somewhat glaring to me in that chart, that one of our provisioning centers is providing a lot of extra parking, and that's at a site that has the ability to accommodate that request, and another of the provisioning centers isn't providing as much extra parking. So I'm wondering where you get your numbers for the needed amount of parking?
I'll let our parking consultant speak to that. Julie?
Good evening, Julie Kroll, Leeson Van den Brink. We did the parking analysis for this project. Do you guys have a copy of the study that was provided? And I can kind of walk you through?
No, we do not.
We do not? Did we not receive a copy?
It was in...
Was it in the supporting document?
It was in the supporting document. It's, I think, two pages.
Why don't you walk us through that, Julie, if you don't mind?
Okay. So, do you have the other chart you could bring up that maybe will be helpful? So, do you have the other chart you could bring up that maybe will be helpful? That was in the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's see what this is. Maybe slides. Okay. That'll work. So, there was a baseline assumptions that we received from the applicant regarding their proposed operations. So, one of which was how many employees are going to have per shift, how many employees on site. So, opening day, they expect between 14 and 20 employees working in this building. So, that was one of our baseline assumptions, is we need to provide enough parking for 20 employees. Next, they're going to have between one and three delivery drivers. So, those, just like a pizza delivery, they need to have space for the delivery drivers to park. So, that's the 20 plus the three for the delivery drivers, and then each sales station can process up to seven transactions per hour, and the site has 11 sales stations. So, total of 77 transactions maximum per hour. And then, they can do curbside, which can add an additional 10 per hour. So, when we're looking at the parking, we're trying to figure out what's the max parking demand that we could anticipate for this parking lot. And then, we assumed one customer, one space. So, we know that it's quite possible, there might be two customers per car, but for purposes of this analysis, we assumed one person, one vehicle for all of these, between the employees, curbside, the customers, et cetera. So, when we get into this chart, that's where we broke it down, so you can see, and this is based on, we had an hourly distribution for each of these particular demands, so in-store, curbside, employees, and then the existing use, which is the State Farm that currently shares its parking facility. So, the peak demand occurred, it was 3:00 PM, and it was 19 customers parked, three curbside, 20 employees, three delivery drivers, and then three for the State Farm, which gave us a total of 48. So, that's how we came up, but that would be your peak demand. So, we don't design parking lots for peak demand, because then you have 100% occupancy. So, that's how you go -- can you go to the next table? Just hold.
There you go, the wrong way.
Yeah, you were almost there. The one that has the 52, there we go. So, we're looking at, we want to design the parking lot for an 85% utilization, and that gives you some turnover in the parking lot, because if you design it for 100% demand, then you have people circling the lot waiting for somebody to back out. So, if you have that extra surplus in the lot, it allows for those extra spaces for snow and for turnover. So, that's how we got to the 52.
Okay. So, this is on Woodward, which has a strong non-motorized, or I'm sorry, a strong transportation network, a strong busing system, lots of stops. Does the applicant not anticipate any customers coming that way?
So, for the purposes of this parking study, we did not do any motor split, we didn't do any, you know, ped bike transit trips reduction, and again, like I said, for the employees, we had one car, one person. That's certainly something, you know, that could be considered as you look at the parking and the site further down the line, but for purposes of what we did here, we didn't consider anything. It was basically worst-case scenario, how much parking would they need for this facility?
And how often does the applicant think that the worst-case scenario will happen? For example, if we're looking at something like a Myers, and you park it for the day before Thanksgiving or something, most of the time, that's not going to be utilized. So, how often is this worst-case scenario expected?
So, this is kind of their projected ideal daily operations. So, with the 20 employees, the 77, I think this, and I would let them speak to how they anticipate their operations, because what we evaluated was based on the data they provide us, based on their proposed operations. So, David, do you want to speak to your operations a bit?
We anticipate our hours being 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week.
Okay. And you expect the peak utilization, peak operations to happen on a regular basis?
I mean, this is all new, because there hasn't been a case study on 411 Avenue Dispensary. We anticipate with 80,000 cars a day, that's 40,000 northbound, 40,000 southbound, that this is going to be one of the busiest dispensaries in the state of Michigan.
Nice.
So, what I'd like to do, I'd like to formally withdraw our request to conditional rezone 1276 Franklin.
So, you didn't, you want to take that out of consideration?
Yes.
You have no interest in having us discuss that this evening?
Correct.
Okay. So, 1276 Franklin, no longer up for discussion on a conditional rezoning?
That's correct.
I will add, in regards to Wiltshire, it would, because of the Flagstar Bank, western, the western property line, our proposed redevelopment of 1299 Wiltshire will make that entire parcel, both parcels, can ruin. Can ruin? You'll have the same six-foot brick wall with the limestone cap. That is exactly what we're proposing as our screen wall, the same identical screen wall that you see at Flagstar Bank. Except for there's access to your wall, not to...
Okay. Does anyone have any other comments on the Planning Commission related to the parking study in particular right now? Go ahead, Mark.
My question is, so you plan on having 20 employees from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM every single day of the week? 20 employees at your operation? Is that including the three drivers, or so you'll have 23 including the drivers, and does that include the security guard that's in the parking lot?
I believe 20 is the upper end of the range. We would anticipate having 20 during those higher traffic hours, and not having 20, say, at 11 o'clock in the morning, where there isn't a lot of traffic. I do believe that 20 does include the security.
And the security guard will be outside, so also taking us like a roll, like in a car, or...
So, the security guard is going to be what we call rolling. So, they will go to where they think they provide the best security. If there's, you know, issue with the parking lot, they'll be in the parking lot. If there's a disruptive guest in the lobby, they'll be in the lobby, and moving around controlling the area if necessary.
So, not necessarily in a car, like patrolling in a car is why I was...
No, no, we're not anticipating that. It may change, but that's not our approach.
Off-site parking? Okay, any other questions on the parking study or the numbers that we have up here? Go ahead, Mark.
The elimination of the Franklin lot reduces the proposed parking by how much?
12.
12 spaces.
So, the Franklin property was 12 spaces?
Right.
So, we had 56 total for both, for basically Wiltshire ours and Franklin's. So, what is that? Is it 44?
44. And, just so I'm clear, under the current ordinance, they only need 20, right?
I believe the number's 15.
15.
15, yeah.
Yeah, so that was, that number was given to us when we applied for our license. It was one space for 225 square feet.
You have 20.
Yeah. Yes, we have a surplus currently above and beyond what we're requiring to have. Not many, and clearly you can see not close to that.
When you were rolling through those interior renderings, I was struck by how many cash registers there were.
There's 11.
At least.
Yeah, I think there is 11.
11.
Just one on this.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I believe we're clear on this, but a parking study is a, it kind of took place in a sort of, I'll put it in a vacuum. You didn't, not only did not account for transit options on Woodward, you didn't take into consideration the four other dispensaries that are going into Berkeley or dispensaries in neighboring communities, that just wasn't part of your study.
No, so the data that was provided was based on their projected operations. So, that's what we use to evaluate the parking demands for the site.
The data is based on a work, on a maximum level of business?
It's based on a pro forma. You know, in the end, it's our best guess, and I'm not going to say it's going to happen exactly as you predict. It could be more, it could be less, we don't know, but it's our best guess.
Sounds my understanding, thanks.
I have a question. Does your pro forma include the dispensaries that are going to be in Berkeley and the other ones in the area that probably will affect your business?
You know, I would say the pro forma was based off, you know, a lot of times, it was off traffic counts. But, I mean, I don't think we should be here to address our business projections. You know, our parking projections remain in good faith. If you guys think we got it wrong, let us know, but this is what we believe will be the parking for, to service all our customers. So, that's what we're trying to do, is allow them space to park in a parking lot as opposed to on the street.
Did you explore any options with other businesses in the area that maybe have access parking to have employees park at other lots that are...
We've made several calls. We have not been able to find someone to do it, and I will put this out to everyone in this room. If you have a place that's close by, and you can fit 15 to 20 parking spots, or you know someone who can, please contact us. We would love to have some off-site parking, especially without Franklin, but we just haven't been able to lock anything down.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions related to the parking analysis? Okay, one thing I want to point out that Commissioner Patterson was kind enough to note to me just now, is that we are not talking about the specific use. This is a permitted use in the district.
That's right.
Correct, Ms. Mason Minak?
Correct.
So, that is not something that we, as a Planning Commission, have any control over. This is a principal permitted use, and the applicant is allowed to occupy this space if they can meet all the other ordinance requirements with this particular use.
In other words, they have the right to operate a marijuana dispensary there. We can't deny them as long as they meet the ordinance. One aspect of that is that if they provide 15 parking spaces, they can operate, so...
That is true.
Yeah, they can operate with 15.
And having said that, we certainly don't want to see spillover parking onto the neighborhood streets. That's something that the city would like to prevent. That's something everyone up here would like to prevent. So, let's move on then, I think, to the next larger...
I'm going to ask you to address one more question on the parking.
The, I'm sorry, but the time for public comment is over. If you have additional questions, this is probably going to be a continuing discussion. Like I said, we're not wrapping this up tonight. I would ask Ms. Mason Minak, and she can definitely get back to you if we don't get through it in the course of the discussion. So, the next big question, I think, is this potential rezoning on Wiltshire. So, before we get into the specifics of the site plan, why don't we move on to the potential conditional rezoning? As the applicant stated, the Franklin conditional rezoning is off the table at this point. The Wiltshire conditional rezoning is still up for discussion. I want to make sure I understand correctly, the master plan does not support a rezoning. Is that correct, Ms. Mason Minak? Yes. So, just as a point of clarification for those in the audience that might not know, we went through our master plan update a couple of years ago. This particular area adjacent to Woodward was a big point of discussion as part of that master plan, and whether or not the Planning Commission felt comfortable designating some areas as transitional areas. We talked a long time about that, and this particular parcel on Wiltshire was not included as part of one of the areas that the Planning Commission felt when we did the master plan update was appropriate to act as an area that could accommodate uses other than single-family residential and those accessory uses you'd usually find with that district. Generally, rezoning decisions are based on the master plan. So, we set this plan up. In some cases, the zoning doesn't match what the master plan shows. Just for clarification purposes, an applicant comes in, let's say, proposes a zoning district that matches the master plan, you know, it's a really, usually a very easy decision for us then. We've already planned for that particular zoning in that case. In this case, the district that the applicant is proposing does not match what we're showing in the master plan. They're also proposing a conditional rezoning, which means that they're offering up a set of conditions, and that usually includes what the use would be of a particular parcel in order to secure some specifics of what the rezoning would entail. So, it would be only a parking lot is really what it would come down to, and there might be a few other conditions about screening and things that you might typically see and something like that. So, this does not match the master plan. So, this is unusual, in the sense that we would have to make particular findings as to why we think it's appropriate when the master plan doesn't call for that zoning. So, does anyone have anything else to add, just on general comments on that? Okay. Who wants to start on their feelings on a potential conditional rezoning or questions? Go ahead, Lisa.
So, my thoughts are, I think by now, we've found that most of the marijuana applicants recognize that our ordinance requires less parking than most of them feel like they need. Most everybody's come with more parking than our ordinance requires. So, on that, I feel like, yes, 20 is probably not enough to avoid spillover in the streets. And if we've learned anything from Vinsada, that can be very, very problematic to the neighbors that live around it. 55 seemed, or 58 seemed like a lot, like probably way too many. So, it's hard, right? This isn't in the master plan. It wasn't an ideal zone. However, if there's not enough parking, it's going in front of houses, and that will come with all the problems that usually come with people parking in front of houses, which include hanging over driveways, or throwing out garbage out of the side of their car, and all these things that we hope nobody does, but inevitably, people do. And so, for that, I lean towards they need more parking somewhere. A shared parking would be ideal, but if that isn't something that they can find, then what do we do? So, I'm very conflicted, but I do think they need more parking than the 20 spots that they have in order to not affect the neighborhood adversely.
Okay. You're all set for it?
I think I'm all set for it right now.
Does anyone else want to jump in? I think the more information we can provide the applicant and the members of the public, the better. So, I guess I would encourage everyone to throw their thoughts out there, so prepared.
I will. So, I'm thinking the, for conditional rezoning, when we went through this process along Woodward, and it has that sawtooth look at it, the particular uses that were abutting existing were not a concern or consideration for the particular parcels that were considered transitional buffer or turned into gateway for future land use, if you're following what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I guess it does seem like Commissioner Compton said more parking is necessary, that particular triangle piece where the business is located. I don't know if the master plan can fully have anticipated a particular use that would require that much parking behind it for the budding parcel, because other than that, it was more about squaring off properties mostly along the backside of Woodward. backside of Woodward, not particularly what we were squaring off, what was in front of what we were squaring off when the master plan was, the future land use map was created.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, I'm just kind of, when we did the master plan process, use consideration for those properties on Woodward was not consideration for which ones became gateway for it or fully.
I would agree.
Right. So it's very plausible that this is a, could be a correct conditional rezoning.
Go ahead.
But, but the reason we did that was to square them off, so now we're creating another sawtooth if it was to be rezoned. Then the two parcels on Franklin, I mean, the one that's no longer being considered, but the two less to that would now be sawtoothed. And so now we're putting a parking lot next to a house that wasn't, didn't have one, in the backyard of, I think it's two there, and touching the corner of the third one. So...
You're saying we're making the sawtooth worse?
Correct.
Can you share the map so we can follow along with it?
Sure.
So, so where the N is, is now our, there's two parcels there, it looks like. So now we're creating the sawtooth again that we just corrected. And we're now putting a parking lot on Wiltshire next to the house to the, I always have to do the compass in my head, to the west, and the two to the south, and touching a corner to the one on the, by the IL there, if you will, if you can see that. So I agree that more parking may be needed according to the applicant's request, but I also don't like the idea of putting a parking lot next to three and a quarter homes, four homes affecting those residents that have spoke to them, that they didn't really want it. How many spots is, are out front that on the...
Three.
So there's 20 in the back, three out front, or?
Correct.
So there's 23 currently, and you share those with State Farm only, or the building next to it as well to the south?
Front empty.
Yeah, can't be, you can't calculate those front ones because they're in the public right of way. So we can't count those as credit to our building because they could be the dry cleaner, they could be their parking spaces on the corner, you know, so we can't, we can't use them.
So this State Farm, then, how many spots?
Three.
They need three? So that's coming out of your 20 in the back?
That is correct.
And the dry cleaner would?
The dry cleaner has their own lot between theirs and his building.
Okay.
He's correct that the on-street parking can't count towards his required parking. So, um, so the required parking for both State Farm and for the cannabis center, when it came through, scored in the marijuana checklist that used that lot that was in the back, it's 20 spaces, and they can't count the three spaces. That doesn't mean the three spaces wouldn't functionally be used.
Correct.
But you should keep into account that they are generally accessible and cannot be controlled by the property owner.
What else I think?
It looks like on Google Maps, there's also two spaces to the north. And again, there's street parking.
I can't hear you, sorry. Can you say that again?
The two spaces to the north on Wiltshire, there's street spaces. I can't, I'm looking at Google Maps, so I'm not sure.
I know what you're referring to. We're actually taking those away, and we create a green space there. So those, those now become part of our, there's a, there's a bike repair station there, there's bike storage there, and there's landscaping in streets there.
Are you proposing bike racks?
Yep, we are.
Do you have additional comments, Julie, right now? Not right now, I'm sorry.
Okay.
For, I guess, I'm kind of like you, a little bit conflicted with the parking too, because I don't think 15 is enough, but 56 is an awfully lot. I'm glad to hear you guys are taking Franklin off the table. The one on Wiltshire, I have concerns about the, like Greg said, about making the, making the sawtooth more severe, you got residential behind you. I do like, though, that you providing a nice buffer at both the west and the south side. I appreciate that. I just wonder if it would make more sense to have the parking condensed more closer to the alley, basically where the duplexes, as opposed to taking out a house on Wiltshire and making that sawtooth worse.
I asked everyone to quiet down, especially since we don't have microphones. Are you, are you all set, Julie?
I am.
Okay. Mark, do you have anything?
Can I gratification?
Yeah, I can go if you want.
I'm a great fan of shared parking. I hate over-parking our community. Parking lots are nothing but storage closets for cars. But all of our efforts to promote shared parking in Berkeley have so far basically failed. I think the city could do more legally to encourage that, but that's not on our plate Despite the fact that we're creating a sawtooth effect, well, just one other comment along those lines, the problem on Woodward is parking is mal-distributed. It's not, it's not proportionate to the businesses that are on there. We're striving for the master plan to try to get to that point. But we didn't consider a marijuana dispensary in the master plan, and that does require more parking than other kinds of businesses do, from what we know.
Or just a different location.
And, sorry, we can't do anything about the location.
No, no, I understand, but they can.
Okay, we're not going to go back and forth.
We cannot do anything about the location. We have to try to protect the community and make it as compatible with the community as we can, and I think that requires more parking. I don't want to see a situation where we have cars parked up and down the street and cars kind of slowly moving up and down that street. I think it's just, it's just going to be bad for everybody. So I kind of lean toward the conditional rezoning for the Wiltshire lot with reluctance, but, you know, it is what it is. We have to, we have to deal with, you know, less the perfect world, we come up with less the perfect solutions, and that would be, that would be my opinion.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to offer something for Sod. The parking and the generation of parking, according to the applicant and the applicant's professionals who did a parking study, is based on the number of employees and the number of transactions that happen in this marijuana provisioning center.
Can you speak louder? Sorry?
Sorry. So the applicant and the applicant's parking consultant has stated that the need for parking is contingent upon the number of employees and the number of customers. And that is what happens inside the building. And the parking and the parking demand is because of what happens inside the building. When you are looking at a conditional rezoning, the applicant can offer conditions. They could offer conditions that deal with the number of customers, number of transactions, or number of employees. Those, from your staff's point of view, might be very hard to enforce, but if there's a need for more buffer, or there, you feel that the conditional rezoning isn't appropriate, I also want to tell everybody in the room that that would be approved by city council. You are only a recommending body, that it might be worthwhile to look at what's going on inside the building, and that can be limited because that is an assumption that the applicant brought to the table, and maybe that can change. And that, this is a time to talk about different options.
So, is it appropriate to say, I'm looking at your floor plan, and I see between 13 and 17 transaction spaces, which is necessitating this need for a large amount of parking? Is there a way to reduce the amount of transaction desks you have?
Let me speak to that for a second, because I think that's a bit misleading. You need a separate register for a medical sale versus a recreational sale. So what appears like there could be 13 different registers for one guest, there's actually, you got to cut that in half. Because we need separate registers. One customer could come in and say, I'm a medical user, and then we got a premium for that register. But then if they say I'm recreational, then we got to do it to another register. So I would encourage you not to get so hung up on the number of registers. And I'd also say, we're not really interested in enforcing transaction limits. So if that's a road you want to go down, you do not come or sit.
A medical, or any marijuana establishment, recreation or medical of this size, this is new to us? How many registers would you usually have in a similarly sized business? Your average marijuana dispensary?
It could be all over the place, because, you know, first off, you have to say, is it medical only, is it rec only, or is it public?
Let's say it's both.
So then you're going to double whatever the usual numbers. So now let's just say, like, take a live.
Does anyone know? I don't give a dispensary.
How large is live and square footage versus your building?
It's a pretty small space, and we, I mean, we've lived in Colorado, we've lived in Ohio, we live in Michigan, obviously, but you can have a medical-only facility if that's something that you're open to, which I assume that you're not, because of living your transactions, living your profits. But probably four of each is, is pretty hefty. I mean, the way that you cycle people through is very, very quickly. Three each is still quite significant. I mean, the size of that space from just where I'm standing is not like a 13-employee kind of dispenser. I mean, I know you're splitting it, but you would have them lined up. I just...
So, thank you, thank you for that. We usually aren't going to do that, but I know you guys have a little bit of expertise potentially in the area, which none of us do. So thank you for that, but go ahead.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, could we get away with 10 registers? Maybe. And maybe it would limit our ability to cycle through customers quickly during peak hours, which would then in turn lead, if we don't get the conditional rezoning, to people parking in the street because we're there in the facility longer. So I don't think the number of registers is really relevant to parking, other than it actually decreased the parking, because it would increase the ability to cycle through customers, so they're only there for five minutes instead of 10 or 15.
But I do think it affects your number of employees, right? You're needing an employee per register if you have all registered money. If you have the register, you have the number of employees.
The employees will be placed based off demand. That's not something we're prepared to say, we're only going to have four bartenders. If there's demand for eight, we will have eight. And if there's only demand for four, we miscalculated, we'll have four. But I don't think it's the planning commission's job really to, like, say, you can only hire certain amount of people, you can only create certain amount of jobs.
And it's not a conditional rezoning, you offer the city conditions, we either accept or don't accept those conditions.
Well, I would say that's not a condition we're prepared to offer.
Okay. So, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. The only reason I ask that question is it seems like this is the classic 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. And then, is there any way to reduce the potatoes? Or make it so the bag really protects the people outside the bag? And so there seems to be some things that maybe that could happen. And so the applicant's answer that maybe reducing the number of employees or reducing the number of folks, transactions is not there. Other things that seem that are part of the equation are the curbside pickup, because that's another space that's not used, and that, and we haven't really had that with the other provisioning centers in terms of designating spaces, as far as I recollect, and I don't remember seeing those on site plans. So I think that there, I, my, my question to you and to the applicant is, is there any way we can reduce the amount of potatoes so that there isn't the need for the additional parking? Or is that just a function of it being on Woodward and the number of, of traffic counts?
Well, I would say reducing the amount of employees, which is actually going to have the exact opposite effect. It is going to cause, again, longer wait times. So if someone is in that facility for 20 minutes because they got to wait because there's five people ahead of them, versus if they have, you know, eight bartenders and they can actually get to people quickly, that's going to reduce the amount of time people are there, and the amount of time people are there is a direct function of how many cars can be parked there. If we can get a customer in and out in a minute, then we may never have an overflow situation, even with the current situation. But, you know, I've never seen a minute happen in this industry. Five minutes, you're doing pretty good. So, you know, I think talking about trying to mandate the number of employees is actually going to be, have the opposite effect than you think it would.
Please.
Can I ask?
Sorry, she says several times. So I'm looking at this, and I'm wondering, I mean, because we, we don't love parking lots, right? Nobody does, and the neighbors don't want to live right next to a parking lot. So we're looking at right now 44 spaces, right? What if those nine right next to the Wiltshire property, what if we, like, banked those? Just landscape it for now, and then if you need them, if traffic is becoming a problem, then you turn those into additional spaces?
Yeah, that's...
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's something...
We could even, we could even do something like make it lawn area, and if it even had to be striped, because it could, it could help with, again, stormwater detention too, because if that acts as a bioswale or it acts as another rain garden, that can then help to absorb, because I, I hear about the flooding, and I live in Honeytowoods, and we flooded too. And so, so I'm, I'm very conscious of that as well. So I think there is an opportunity that if we did need those nine future, then yes, that's a great idea. I would be for that.
I think that is a great idea. And then also along the south side, since you're taking Franklin off the table, you gain at least another spot, maybe two.
We gained one there, correct?
Mark?
Oh, I, just along the line of the employee question, you described everything in terms of having double the number of registers, one for medical, one for recreational. Is that truly realistic picture? Are you going to have just as many medical customers as recreational? I would kind of think there'd be a ratio of fewer medical to more recreational, quite frankly. How's it, how's it going to work?
Probably, yeah. I mean, you're probably correct. We don't know until it happens, but I think your intuition is right, and I would think so.
And that at least potentially could allow us to consider somewhat fewer stations?
I don't know why we're getting hung up on the station issue, because the station, having more stations increases turnover, and increased turnover means people are parked less time. So I just don't understand it, because I think it's going to have the opposite effect that I think what you guys are thinking.
Okay.
So I haven't put my comments out there yet. I tend to land somewhere where Megan is suggesting. This is a conditional rezoning, so it's up to you, the applicant, to offer us conditions that we would find palatable to consider rezoning this property. And one of those conditions, I think, is to limit the amount of needed parking somehow. That's up to you guys to come up with how you might do that. Land baking was thrown out there. I will tell you right off the bat, we spent so much time talking about this transitional area in the master plan along Woodward, it would be really hard to convince me that a conditional rezoning is warranted. Even if you say that additional parking is warranted, I know our parking ordinances need to be updated, but I just feel like this creep into the neighborhood is not something that I can support. I don't want to end up with a line of conditional rezonings along Woodward because business A needed extra parking, and now business C needs extra parking, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we're welcoming to business here, and we certainly want to, to support businesses, but... But if you feel like this is not the right fit for you, because the property just cannot accommodate your needs, then maybe explore other solutions. If it's shared parking, and you can still accommodate your needs on this parcel with that additional shared parking, then great. I, I'm really having a hard time seeing how I could support any approachment to the neighborhood at all. I don't think that that's the entire feeling of the commission. I think you have some support on here for a conditional rezoning. Provided the conditions are, that are offered, you know, can meet the wishes of the majority of the commission, I would encourage you to reach out to the surrounding residents and see if there's any conditions that they would be willing to accept, whether that's land bank, parking, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know what their screening ideas or requirements might be, but if it has the support of the surrounding residents, that, I think, makes a big difference. I think everyone's had the opportunity to say what they want to say on the rezoning piece. Mark?
I have a question for the chair. Do we know what findings we have to make to approve or recommend a conditional rezoning against the master plan? Do we know legally, what do we have to, what marks do we have to hit?
Megan, jump in if I'm wrong, but I don't think there are a specific set of findings. I think it would be unique to this parcel as to why we think it would be appropriate to deviate from the master plan based on the conditions that the applicant offers. Is that correct?
That is correct. The only other thing that you can take into mind is whether conditions have significantly changed since the master plan was adopted. But since it was only adopted a short while ago, that probably wouldn't be relevant. Also, with the conditional rezoning, I want to tell the planning commission, now is your time to share what you think about what those conditions should be, because once they file the application, it is not a negotiation. They come with conditions, you say yes or no. City council says yes or no. The back and forth that we have at site plan, the back and forth you might have with especially in use, the back and forth that you definitely have with the planned unit development, it does not happen with a conditional rezoning. It's a yes or no. So, if you have any opinions about what those conditions could be, I would really, really recommend that you share them now.
If I may, just say a couple of things in response to some of the things that were said. Yeah, I don't think the master plan contemplated a marijuana dispensary. Though, I will say, the language in it and the corridor section does contemplate rezoning residential land for parking, for commercial uses in Berkeley Corridors. With that said, you know, we're here to get your input. If you guys just don't want the parking, and you're like, just go with those 20 spots, if there's overflow, there's overflow, the residents will deal with it, then we'll do that. I mean, the ROI on this, like, this is a million-dollar parking project. Do you think, I mean, the time to get that money back as a business, it really doesn't make sense to do this. But we're doing it. And if you don't want it, when we're, you know, the purpose, I can tell you, the purpose was to prevent overflow parking, so the residents wouldn't be there. That was the purpose. If you don't want it, if the residents don't want it, we won't do it. We just want to know what the thoughts are of the planning commission, so we can plan accordingly. So, that's all I ask, is just let us know what you think. I think, I don't share, we don't know what you think, but if the rest of you could just let us know, and we will adjust our plans, however that may come out.
Yeah, make a suggestion just because of things I know, or I was gonna suggest your condition might be something.
But you could talk to the applicant. If you feel like you have a condition that might be worth them offering in the future, then I would suggest that you get with them. Okay, so, it looks like the applicant and Ms. Mason Minnick are encouraging anyone, if they have any additional clear direction, because that is something I agree. I want to make sure that we are crystal clear in each of our thinking on this and communicating that to the applicant. Sure, we could take a straw poll. If you guys are, is everyone comfortable taking a straw poll?
Who would be else?
I think that it would be helpful. The one thing that I think is a huge question is, I don't know if everyone agrees on the conditions that would be appropriate, whether or not they would consider.
I don't know if they've heard any conditions.
So, let me just say what you feel, and then what conditions you would like to see.
So, that's, that's fine, too. Would everyone rather go down the line and say, these are the circumstances in which you might consider supporting this? Or you would not support it? Or if you aren't sure, then say that, but I would encourage you to be more sure. Joe, I'm gonna put you in the spotlight first.
Sure. I mean, I think that the appropriate conditions for zoning is.
I can't.
You speak up, please.
Oh, sorry, yeah. With appropriate conditions, I think the rezoning seems needed for the property.
So, what are the appropriate conditions?
Those may be related to banking parking, like we said, that Commissioner Kepner suggested. Phasing the project, I don't know if that could be a condition. But, yeah, I think something regarding additional parking is gonna be required, although.
I, I thought I was gonna support this, and I'm not. I'm not hearing any reasons why, I'm not hearing anything on why it's actually necessary, the more I think about it. You guys are on Woodward, you're gonna be busy, but there's a lot of other places for people to go, which I know is not what you want to hear when you're talking about a business plan. But I think there has to be, like everyone's saying, there hasn't been any conditions given. I personally would really like to see something with shared parking, with Shane Baum and Feg Star, who aren't open, probably at your peak hours. In my opinion, your peak hours are not gonna be during banking hours, and your peak hours are not gonna be when an eye doctor is working. Your peak hours are gonna be after work, when the bank is closed, and they are going to be, again, when the eye center's closed. So, that would be something I would like to see versus rezoning the property.
If I could just may, we did talk to both banks, shared parking and.
Anything else, Julie?
I don't.
Right.
I really don't like the idea of turning residential lots into parking lots. I never have. I didn't really even before, like, the potential corridor expansions, zones that we have. We worked extensively on that, and I was convinced it was okay. But it creates a bigger problem, and we're affecting three different parcels now, maybe four, so I don't like that. We haven't heard any conditions, it's just what you want from us. And I don't think that is really how a conditional agreement should work. You proposed 23 employees, which I think, that seems like a lot from the other ones that have went through site plan review. They, similar size, that never told us that high of a number of employees to our business. But I also somehow limit that number for us, that could be a condition. The bank parking, I like it, but then who decides when it's needed, when the overflow's needed? I think that puts the city and code enforcement into, if your parking lot's a certain percentage full for a certain amount of hour, like, how do you regulate that? I don't know if we're in the ability to do that. Shared parking, you said you reached out to two banks. There's other businesses up and down Woodward. Maybe your employees could share parking. Somehow, another provisioning center said they were gonna Uber their employees, if they're local. You have bike racks, maybe encourage biking from your employees. But currently, you're taking up 23 spots for employees, so I don't know where, I wouldn't support this.
Okay, I don't have anything additional to add. I think my comments were clear. Lisa?
I probably tend towards approving it, because if we go forward with the amount of parking spots they have now, that overflow goes into the streets. It just does. And we want to prevent that. I think, I don't think by saying no, we're not gonna conditionally rezon it, I don't think that solves any problems, because I think, then they go, okay, and everything's on the street, and we have another Vincetta garage issue. What I would like to see, I'd like to see the banks parking, and I would like to see lots of landscaping, trying to give us rain gardens or bioswells or something that will help with the flooding for the other residents that live close, so that it has some benefit.
Chylo?
I, I hesitate with the rezoning, the conditional rezoning. But like Lisa, if you can buffer the heck out of it, land bank those nine spaces, make it so the stormwater helps the people downstream, that would go a long ways to convince me that it would be a good idea.
Mark?
I'm reluctantly in favor of rezoning. I do like the land bank idea a lot. That can, could well be made a condition, as far as I'm concerned. I also second the comments about landscaping. I do note that underground detention is proposed for the improved consolidated lot, and that is gonna help the flooding problem, not hurt it. And I think, I think maybe that's a collateral benefit of doing this. I, my absolute preferred solution is shared parking, but I, I've had a lot of years now of trying to, of reviewing those, trying to see if they work or not. They just don't work under current conditions. They're not, they're, they're just not feasible. I think the city could do more to make them feasible, but that's not on our plate. So, shared parking, to me, is just not, not a viable alternative, although it ought to be. So, my reason for supporting zoning is I don't want to see traffic congestion situations develop at that intersection. I don't think that helps anybody. I don't think that helps the community, or the people that live nearby. So, that's my position.
So, sorry, I forgot to add one thing. So, we're talking about overflow. They originally said, I thought it was 70 spots or 70 people. I don't know why that number, or at least 12 more spots. 70 transactions per hour, maybe that's where the 70 is coming from. But this one spot's not gonna prevent much overflow. We're still, they're still telling us there's going to be overflow anyways. So, yes, 44 spots will help, but 23 of them are going to employees. So, and the three of them are gonna be curbside, so you're at 26. Helps a little bit, but it's not solving the problem.
If I could just add one thing, which I forgot to say. 23 employees for a building that's small seems, seems intensive.
It's 12 to 20, 20 would be the peak. I don't know how 20 turns into 23.
The three delivery drivers.
Three delivery drivers that were on your chart?
Well, let's not worry about three employees. Let's, you know, 12 to 20 is a pretty big swing. And I'm just wondering how, whether the applicant would, could think about the number of employees they're really gonna have in there, maybe in conjunction with the land bank idea. And we can, we could maybe play it as it, as it goes a little bit that way, rather than just swinging around drastically to a high-intensity situation all of a sudden.
So, the other thing is, we have two vacancies on the planning commission right now. So, there are two people who potentially would weigh in on this, depending on your timing, that are not here right now. And I don't know who they will be, or what their feelings would be, but I just wanted to bring that up, too. So, I think we have, we've given you a clearer idea on the conditional rezoning. I know you also wanted some comments, if we had any, on the site plan itself. Drainage is something that's been brought up several times. Berkeley follows the Oakland County drainage standards, which requires a 100-year storm detention. You have to detain all of your water for the 100-year storm on site. So, I think, I feel pretty safe in saying, whatever happens on this particular parcel, it would be an improvement over what is there now, because I'm guessing there's no detention. So, that's something that our engineering consultants will look at. It's something, considering the problems that Berkeley's had with drainage, that we've been very strict in making sure that all of the engineering that is done on a site is detaining for the 100-year storm event. Chylo, do you have anything to add on that? You're kind of our drainage expert.
No, you said it exactly right. I mean, it's being redeveloped, so they'll have to bring it up to code. So, they'll have to do all the detention. So, I would imagine there's nothing out there right now.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments, questions, feedback on the site plan layout itself, other than the parking? I think we've kind of talked that to death, so maybe other than the parking.
So, the facade, the east-facing facade of Woodward, 26% windows, I think. Is that, that includes two different kinds of windows? That falls below our ordinance standard, I think, does it not?
For Woodward?
The Woodward-facing facade.
I don't know if there is a standard for Woodward, is there?
Yeah, I'd like, I guess, maybe rephrase that. What is the standard?
People, give me a moment. I know it's late.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming as you're filing out. If you have additional questions, please contact Megan.
How do we contact her?
My email address is comdirector.
I'm sorry.
Two N's, right?
C.
No, one. C-O-M.
C-O-M.
D-I-R-E-C-T-O-R at BerkeleyMish.net. You can also, if you do it to the building, at BerkeleyMish.net, which might be easier to remember, they will get it to me. And I am in City Hall Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and can be reached by phone there, or can, you can make appointments to see me.
And then, any questions that we ask you through this email? What will be done with those questions?
I can update you as best I can on what the status is. And then, also, I will put them in the folder and have them as correspondence with anything going forward to the planning commission, and share that with them as it goes forward.
Okay, they'll be shared with planning commission?
Yeah, just like the one was tonight. And it was placed in the project folder electronically and in paper.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
If I was to choose to say or go, will there be a moment to discuss the proposed drive-through scenario of this alley?
Yeah, we may get into some of that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of an informal discussion, so I can't promise, but.
Can I?
We may, we're just providing whatever comments we have. So, at this point in the process, we have a potential site plan layout. It hasn't been reviewed, I think we've said several times, against the ordinance. So, we're really just kind of throwing out any general comments or big concerns that we might have. We're probably not gonna get into very specific items. But I don't know which way, what comments the different commissioners have. So, yes. Mark, you mentioned the Woodward facade.
So, the first floor elevation of a building that fronts the street shall be comprised of a minimum of 40% and a maximum of 80% windows. So, if you look at this from here to here, my guess is that, so, my.
I came up with 26%.
You came up with 26%?
Different kinds of windows.
Yeah, they would need to provide us a schedule and the site plan to let us know whether that meets that, but that's a good point. However, the planning commission can revise these requirements if you find that the standards for site plan approval have been met. So, I think it's worthwhile for you to comment on whether you feel like there should be more.
We've granted deviations in the past, but it seems like the deviations are getting bigger and bigger. Kind of throwing it out there to see how people feel about it.
I like glass.
I agree. I like glass, but, and the storefront doesn't count, right? The doorway doesn't count, if that was all glass? But in this situation, would it count? Because it's not actually fronting Woodward, it's fronting.
But I think as a general comment, we like less.
We like less.
Yeah.
Attentive, attentive less.
Like, the State Farm building, glass would count? Like, I guess that's my question, are these. are these two different?
Yeah. So, the facade is from here to there.
So, we're just looking at theirs, but it's kind of one project. There's a redo on State Farm as well, Ferrera.
So, if there's a redo on State Farm as well, then we look at the whole facade.
The 26% that you came up with was a, was a percentage I put on the elevations. That was just taking into account of our seven point, did not count, the State Farm building. But, if we're gonna renovate the whole building, I think we should get credit for the State Farm building.
Well, we'll see more details when you...
Yeah, correct. Yep, yep. And as long as I know that I got to meet 40%, I'll meet 40%.
So, is the plan to also do the facade and the 220 cleaners?
Nope, it is not.
They should change their name to 420.
Then we'll get people to live in their garage.
I don't know, sounds like a business venture to me.
So, we don't have microphones up here, we're saying, we like glass, not rats.
So, you're gonna bring back a site plan for us, for State Farm and your, the old firehouse, correct? Okay, but not the cleaners? Nope. Okay. I like the corner door.
That is nice.
I like how it's kind of angled.
On the site plan, you guys are doing some cool stuff. I mean, the benches and the, and the bike racks, which, are the bike racks out there now, would you say?
No.
No.
Those are the MOGOs.
And an additional 12 bike spaces?
Yes, correct. We're doing, we're doing the bike, we're doing the bike and bike racks and the bike repair station, where the parking lot, you can see it right there, where those two parking spaces currently are. And where that rain garden is, is where their outdoor seating is currently. So, you can see, we're taking away a ton of paving that is currently there today. And we're including, on the front, Megan, if you could flip back to the other rendering, please, we're also including, those are stormwater planters, so we're actually utilizing and holding water in those that would typically be going into the system. And we're putting a green roof on this building, and we're putting a bioswale, and we're putting a rain garden, we're collecting all of our water on the roof and funneling that to our rain garden. So, we literally are, could be going next to nothing into the sis, the infrastructure you currently have.
For, for the, the parking that was out on Franklin, I see you guys got a little, like, a park bench and like a dog station and stuff.
We did.
Did you consider moving that over to where the landbank parking maybe would be?
Yeah, we could look at that.
Would you consider keeping those parking spaces as, as your curbside pickup?
Sure.
Which parking space?
So...
The two that you're talking about, the two that you're talking about, we're moving?
This is the opportunity for the planning commission to provide...
We can't, we can't take away, we can't keep those two parking spaces along Wilkshire because of the points we received when we got our license. We were taking those away and giving that green space to that. I can't now all of a sudden go and change all of that, because I'm gonna start losing points.
I am, I am, they're not, they're not.
No, they're not. I mean, those, those are garbage parking spaces right now. I mean, they don't meet, they don't meet the ordinance at all.
Joe?
Yeah, along Wilkshire, I guess to the west, is there any way to mimic the landscaping that the bank has with the trees? Because they have like a pretty much tree lined area, and I think, at least the plan I'm looking at, does not show proposed trees. Yeah, that one, Megan, yep.
You mean, that's the bioswale right there on our property? Are you talking in the right of way?
In the right of way.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can put a, we can, we can mimic what Flagstar is, for sure. That's, that's adding four or five trees there. That's a, absolutely would do that. The other thing I want to point out too, though, is, if you notice on the south side of our Wilkshire quote-unquote rezoned area, you notice there's quite a buffer zone, a landscape buffer zone, between that parking on the south end and our screen wall. And it's because that property jogs. So, that gives us the ability to put a lot more landscaping in that pocket right there, which, I know there was a concern about, you're now abutting a couple residential homes there. Well, that's a tremendous, I don't think you've ever seen that in Berkeley, that somebody has given this amount of green belt or landscape area between their parking and, say, masonry or brick screen wall. So, I just want to point that out, that we are very conscious of the neighbors, we're very conscious of trying to keep it as internal as possible.
Is there any need for a dumpster on your site?
We have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's down in that far corner, which is roughly where it is today, but it would be rebuilt. Right now, it's falling apart, the gates are a mess. I know parking lots are a mess, you know? If you, if you driven down that, it's, it's a nightmare right now. So... What are those XDOF spots? That's the curbside parking, curbside pickup. So, okay, there's more of those. Yes. And that, and that striped area is our delivery door, so they would be coming out, a delivery person would be coming out and dropping off the curbside. So, they're not coming out the front door of the building, and all the way around the building, they're making their most fluid movement. All the other customers would come out the back side door. It's right actually, yeah, I mean, Megan's pretty, no, it's a little further down, it's like the end, yes, down there. You can, if you flip to that floor plan, you can see where the main entrance is, and then where the main exit is.
The curbside spaces would be signed, I'm assuming, just as curbside pickup, call and number?
Curbside only.
So, there's no drive-through?
No, it's not drive-through.
It's curbside pickup, like you have curbsided grocery store?
Correct. And it's not, it's not a bank. Yes, that, where she's pointing right there is our exit only. So, again, it puts, it, the route they take is they, they enter into the entry lobby, they come into, you know, they get checked in, they come into, they purchase what they are, and then they're exiting out, and then getting to their car. So, it's just loop that occurs.
It's great to see all the bike amenities, because we have a lot of bikers around here, so that's really...
We have, we've also introduced a couple different outside bench areas, and it was really for purposes of waiting, because, because you don't, we don't typically have a huge waiting room, right, to then go into, to purchase the product. So, that was an idea that we had to, again, create another potential pedestrian item. I'm just thinking, winter, people probably aren't gonna be sitting out there, they're gonna be sitting in their car. No, and, but we also are putting heaters in, infrared heaters underneath the canopies. So, if there is a line that's created on that sidewalk, you know, be like at an outdoor patio, kind of idea.
Other comments or questions on the site plan?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, that concludes our discussion on the seven point provisioning center. Everyone's welcome to stay for election of officers, and the Huntington Woods master plan, if you so choose, but we're not gonna be talking about seven points.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening. So, next up is election of officers. So, I think we're just doing vice chair tonight, is that right, Megan?
Yes.
Because of Marty's absence.
Because of Marty's absence, and by your rules of procedure, you need to do it. And just as a matter of selling point, for the vice chair, the future could only be for a month, because once you have new members, and it's in your rules of procedure that you have to have election of officers in July.
Will you be here next month?
I will not be here for the meeting interview.
So, the vice chair would have to run one meeting?
At least one meeting.
Right, so this month, I will not be here for the regular meeting this month. So, yes, whoever would be selected has to run the meeting again. Which, there is a marijuana provisioning center, right? There will be a marijuana...
It will be 2222 Butter, 2222 11 Mile Butter provisioning. And then, also, outdoor seating for Black Hop Brewery, it's going in, they, they have administrative approval for, for interior renovations, it is a brew stillery, so brewery...
A what?
A brew stillery, where Sugar Kisses used to be.
Oh, okay.
Purple Building.
Yeah.
So, they will brew their own beer and distill their own spirits, and they would like to have outdoor seating, which is especially induced.
And they have room to do brewing and distilling in Sugar Kisses?
Evidently so. So...
What is the other problem?
And then, so, that's, so that could be fun. And then, 3737 12 Mile, the Phillips Row Houses will likely come back, they submitted their engineering, and so if that is, if they get approval from HRC, then they would come back.
I thought we approved that one.
You approved it, but they didn't have engineering sign off, so once it has engineering sign off, it comes back to you for final approval.
So, that'd be fast, like...
That would be, yes, lickety-split.
Okay, so that didn't settle the position.
Good thing I asked. If we decide not to vote, the secretary runs the meeting, we decided, right?
Yep.
All these years, time to shine.
So, I have a name I want to throw out. I would nominate Lisa as our vice chair, if she is willing, and I guess up to the rest of the commission, or if there's anyone else that wants to throw names out.
I would second that nomination.
I would say yes.
I would say yes.
You need a vote, right?
Well, so, can you make the chair? Can you make the motion?
I make the motion to appoint Lisa Comptare as our vice chair of the planning commission, effective for one, one month.
Remaining term.
All right, so, motion by Commissioner Patterson, support by Commissioner Richardson, for Commissioner Patter, ah, not Patterson, to be the vice chair. All right, do it, voice vote or roll call?
Sure, a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Lisa.
Congratulations, Lisa.
This could be the start.
I think so.
All right. The other thing is the Huntington Woods master planning response.
It's just an information thing.
Yeah. If you guys had any edits or whatnot, otherwise, I'll be sending it off.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
We appreciate, I appreciate.
Okay, liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
We are, we are going to operate a bike corral at the Art Bash upcoming this Saturday. Corral is at 12, the north side of 12 at Tyler, west end of the bash, from 10 to 4. Believe you, you bike with us, we'll watch it for you. If you buy a 50 pound vase at the Art Bash, it will not allow you to ride home the vase on your lap, on your bike, it will not allow that.
Good to know.
Forty-nine and a half is okay.
So, that's a good point, the Art Bash is happening this weekend. Anything else, liaison reports? Commissioners, have comments?
I told a few of you to have training, and people emailed back, if you still need it, or need some clarifications, just know the city will pay for it, and Mike Smith is your person who will sign you up, pay for it, send you all the stuff. I'm happy.
We're gonna have it at Mackinac.
Yeah. That conference will be in Mackinac in October, I believe. Mission point. All right. Thank you all.
Motion to a chair, can I have to do that?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to a chair?
Yeah, please do. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
This is like number three or four that are coming.